Mr. Moore, would you like to call us to order?
Yes, sir.
Or do the roll call, excuse me?
Yes, sir. Board Chair Stephen Scribner.
Here.
Vice Chair Denise Adams.
Here.
Amy Day.
Here.
Deborah Hood.
Here.
Bobby Welch. We have four present, we have a quorum.
All right. Mr. Moore, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah, I would love to.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jessamine County Schools exist to motivate and challenge every child every day to be a caring, responsible citizen and a high-level thinker, performer, communicator, and learner for life. That is our mission statement and what should be guiding all of our decisions and discussion here tonight. Mr. Moore, do we have any changes, recommended edits to the agenda, or are we good with it as is?
Good as is.
Okay. Any board members have any questions or comments on the agenda? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to motion to approve.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. All right. Have all the board members had a chance to review the meeting minutes from our May 11th meeting and then our two special meetings that were on June the 2nd and June the 5th?
Yes, sir.
Any revisions or comments on those? Okay. Howard, do we need to approve these individually, or can we make one motion to approve all three?
Probably more correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item D1, the May 11 minutes.
Second.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve D2, June 2nd meeting.
Well, hang on, let's hang on a second. All those in favor of approving D1, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve D2, June 2nd meeting.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no.
Make a motion to approve for June 5th meeting.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Mr. Moore, Communications.
I do want you to know that to keep our social distancing protocol, we do have everyone waiting in different rooms to come in and work tonight so that we can keep the numbers that are expected from the Health Department. So, we'll grab people and bring them in.
Okay.
But the first one up is construction updates. And Val Galusha is going to grab Margie.
We are, for all practical purposes, on schedule with our CTE additions in the kitchen. We're a little behind where we wanted to be on West Jessamine High School administration, but we're in line with the delivery of furniture. So, I don't feel like we have any real hotspots at the moment, do you, Val? So, yeah, the big news is at East Jessamine and at West Jessamine, we are scheduled, I am scheduled, to inspect a week from yesterday, so next Monday, to do my walkthrough on a punch list. We do have a few issues. East Jessamine, particularly with respect to getting our final certificate of occupancy because one of our really important components, a fire door, was shipped incorrectly. So, the contractor is hustling really hard to get that worked out. But it's a specialty item, generally takes a long time to obtain, so that's the only thing that we're really jockeying right now to figure out. Demolition always makes me a little nervous at the beginning of the summer because it gets torn up really fast and it takes a long time to get put back together. But I'm pleased at both East Jessamine and West Jessamine. I'm seeing all of the underground utilities, the piping completed, that plumbing back online, the above-ceiling systems coming together. So, I'm optimistic that they will turn the corner on those as well. We do have, you processed a change order at your last meeting for us, thank you very much. We still have a few down there, I've made reference to them, the cooling towers, I think at your last meeting I said we did not have pricing for that yet now. We do have pricing for that, so the $14,823. We have pricing for an underground stormwater piping that was discovered to be crushed. We actually had a rain event and that pipe backed up, so we put a camera down it and found that over in an area where we weren't even doing any construction, that pipe had collapsed, had become compromised. So, the $8,339 is to correct that. We have a handful, we've got the one credit, a $5,750, and we've got a handful of other credits that we're working on. So, we're hoping we're going to get that a little more balanced out, and we should be in a position to bring that before you at your next meeting. Are there any questions? We're about 80% complete. That last 20% is going to go very slow, and it is not in the contractor's control to speed it up because it's a very small shell game. We must finish the print shop before we can let them get into the print shop over at West Jessamine. And then we have to finish that before we can let them into the existing Vet Tech and JCTC. So, this last bit of it are small pieces at a time. One silver lining to the COVID is that they did get to jumpstart some of those areas. They got about a 30-day advance. So, we're very cautiously optimistic that that will put us a little ahead of our final final deadline. So, but, don't want to say that too out loud because then it won't happen exactly. I should have never said it.
Remind me, what was our, what is our final deadline?
Our final, final deadline is not till October 2021.
Okay.
So, we're hoping we'll do better than that. But again, that impacts very small areas, very small pieces, and as we go forward, once we open the new career and tech ed buildings, you're already got a net square footage way ahead of where you were. So, you've got lots of space to infill and new programs to, boy, I'd like to sign up for some. It's pretty spectacular. The image of the advanced manufacturing, I was looking, I was comparing the two photographs, and there's not a great deal of difference between the one that I've included in tonight's report. The difference is that the HVAC, there are gray up in the ceiling, those are duct socks, so it's cloth, and so it's pretty unique, kind of appropriate for an advanced manufacturing space. And then the large fans, the high-volume, low-speed fans have been installed.
One change, it really hasn't been Margie's, but we've got some equipment that is in some of the back room, in one of the back rooms for some of the heavier equipment for the advanced manufacturing, some of the milling machines, and some of those have been installed of some of the new equipment. But you don't see that, that's in a room beyond the picture that you see there.
It generates a lot of noise, and so that's why we've got it self-contained. Otherwise, it'd be a great area to have on display with the large room.
We are hopeful to have you guys visit that in August, September, but if you guys decide that you want to see it, Providence first and then the others, but yeah, I know you are eager to see it.
If there's ever a time you want to see it, you reach out to me, I'd be happy to walk in there. It is a joy to do it.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you. You as well, you as well.
Thank you, Martin.
Okay. So...
Just give you all an update at the construction progress out at the Providence School. Keep in mind that these photos were taken two weeks ago. We're doing a punch list actually tomorrow morning, so, and I just drove by there on the way here, and there were some updates since these photos have been taken, of course. But, so the exterior, again, we're doing the punch list tomorrow, the exterior building items that are remaining, column covers, they're actually in progress right now. They actually have all of them except for the three of the four large ones there, right in front of the Providence School on the building there. The expansion joint covers are still not installed, and there were some downspouts last time I was there on the far side of the building as well. The addition interior, of course, you all have moved in, both furniture and staff items in boxes, at least the last time I was there. And the project has gotten a temporary certificate of occupancy, got that 529. Floors and ceilings are now complete. There are some stair treads that are on order that have been installed that should be installed by the end of June, but most of the interior items should be ready for our punch list Existing building, so there are three items that need resolution to obtain the final certificate of occupancy. There are some fire strobes in the second-floor existing restrooms, emergency lighting at the existing stair, those are two items, kind of electrical items that the inspector noted in his temporary CO. The other thing that just needs to be installed is interior and exterior handrails. They have the handrails in sight, they just haven't been installed yet. So, that's kind of the pending items in the existing building. Out on the site, clearly the push has been to, in the building itself, and so there are some additional site items remaining. Asphalt paving is kind of one of the big ones, some additional site concrete landscaping, there has been a significant amount of landscaping done, actually, since the last time I saw it really start, starting to look nice. Playground equipment has not been installed, there's some ornamental fence, and again, the exterior railings, but all of those items are scheduled to be completed by the end of June. So, no change orders this month. The, again, going through the project's schedule, the date of substantial completion per the contract is November 11th, 2019. Now, again, we've got a temporary certificate of occupancy, but they have not reached substantial completion. We expect this will be reached by the end of June. Really, the two items that we're looking for is the code-required work and the asphalt paving. You know, some of the additional site items aren't necessarily, those can be finished in the time between substantial completion and final completion, we believe. So, those are the critical items that we're looking for in order for the project to reach substantial completion. As of today, the project is 218 calendar days past the contract's substantial completion date.
And one of the reasons why I've asked Kevin to be here, and I'm going to let Howard kind of take over yet, you've all been asking along the way of what kind of, because of such a delay in the full completion, Howard has been working on some, the notice for liquidated damages, and I'm going to let him speak to that a little bit, and then I kind of give you my strategy or what I'd like to do moving forward.
Thank you, Val. I just wanted to give a little bit of information about the liquidated damages part of the contract. From a business standpoint, it's $500 per day, that from the time of completion, substantial completion until the actual, substantial completion date, which is like 218 days, times 500. But, business side, that is a calculation of 500 times the number of days, not necessarily. The legal side, which has a procedure to it, and Ross Tarrant has been on top of this and notified Val, and is keeping ahead of the money being completed. And in the contract, it gives the board the right to withhold the amount of liquidated damages, so if that's not paid out, then you have to sue to get it back. However, once that is done and we're preparing a notice to assert the liquidated damages clause, which will be sent to Isaac Tatum and to Ross Tarrant, then they have the right to make a claim or to dispute that calculation or assert that those are not correct or to attempt to negotiate some resolution, but we will be in that process under the contract. And ultimately, it could be into court action, and as it goes along, as this is proceeding, it may be that we'll need to come back and talk with the board, possibly close session with respect to negotiations or the potential litigation aspect that might be involved. Technically, in Kentucky, although it seems clear in its contracts to say that instead of actual damages that are part of the agreement, you're going to accept $500 a day if you don't provide construction within the timeframe. But however, the Kentucky case law is, is that if the damages exceed the actual loss that you have, then they may not be collectible. So, that's an area that will need to be looked at and discussed. But I just want the board to be alert to that is part of the contract and the procedures that will be followed to try to get this to a resolution.
And of course, my point at this would be is that once this letter has been communicated to Isaac Tatum, is that then at that point, we would have conversation about what could be done to hopefully avoid going to legal, the legal route. In other words, what other possible in-kind, what other kinds of opportunities they may be willing to do. There are, the reason Michael had mentioned, there are two or three things that are still out there to be done, and I've asked them not to do anything on that, and the reason for that is because they charge us back, and I don't want to be charged back. I want that to be part of the conversation, along with other things, trying to come to some kind of resolution, because obviously, the more goes into court, we don't truly get that much money back because it's costing us go to court. So, I, the first step will be to provide this letter, let them understand this is where we want to go, and then sit down and let's see what we can do as far as negotiations. And then I'll keep you all with Howard informed as to how we move forward with that. There's still plenty enough money left over in the contract to still be within, even if it goes to the end of June, to hit substantial completion. So, we're not in a situation where they're already, we've already paid them more than what would be there, so.
So, the clock is still ticking, though, until they get to substantial?
Until they get substantial completion, clock is still ticking. And, you know, at this point, we're over, we're over $100,000. What, $100,000, $109,000 at this point, today? If we go to the end of June, you're talking about another 15 days or 16 days, so. But I, but know that I think the conversation will be easier once the letter is provided because up until that point, there's no reason to negotiate, so.
Good deal. Any questions, board members?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate you both.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
I'll have to thank you all there.
Superintendent's Report, I'm going to just slide this one in. Joe Willis and Kathy Murrah retired today. They're, are you doing, they have to have a celebration with them in between JCTC and Central Office. I just want to thank them publicly for their service. Joe is the face of Jessamine County, sitting here at the receptionist's desk, and really brought the attitude that we want represented in Jessamine County. Can't tell you how much we're going to miss her.
I'm here because she had East Middle. I wondered how many times.
Do you know how many years of service?
Yeah, but, I mean, I started East Middle in 97. She was there. She was there in 97. So, I don't know.
She was there before that, too, because when I was there in middle school, she was there. I'd say it would be close to 30. I think it's 27 exact.
Well, when I walked in, I said, why Kathy feels rocking chair here? She's got a rocking chair, Daddy. Some people can have a rocking chair. Rocking chair, it's got a big K on it.
That's for Kathy Murrah.
We had two rocking chairs set up under a tree out here for Kathy and Joe. But, yeah, their families there to see them off. And then I have to say Kathy, Kathy was just an absolute workhorse. I mean, she accomplished so much, she had unbelievable organizational skills, very intelligent lady who took her job extremely serious, and I think everyone knew if she was handling something, it was going to be done perfectly. So, hate seeing both of them leave, but it's that same mindset, we better be celebrating the fact that they're getting to retire. So, just wanted to publicly thank them for everything they've done. But I was going to go ahead and identify to you guys under item E, under Superintendent's Report. We get audited for our special education services, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is that acronym there, but they come in and do an external audit of our services for our students with special needs, and it was a very favorable, and the communication is in, and if you want to read each of the items, but again, no findings, no things, nothing that Jessamine County needed to correct, and I think we have always taken a whole lot of pride on the services that we provide for our students with special needs, and it's nice when an external audit comes in and recognizes that. So, I just want to share that. And Shani is here, and part of her grant is to communicate to the board some of the work that's been going on. So, glad that you're here, and I know the board is always excited to hear about the supports that we provide for our students that need all the love they can get.
Well, thank you so much for your time. As Mr. Moore just said, it's part of my audit and grant that I do this, so I do appreciate your time. This year, we only identified 305 students, which is down about 50 to 80 students. We do know that statewide, everyone is basically down because of the moratorium on evictions. So, where we normally get a large surge at the end of the school year, where people tend to be moving and are more mobile, no one has that. So, what we anticipate is that next year, we'll actually have that bump at the beginning of the school year because we all know that evictions will start July 1. So, we're aware of that, and so I just wanted to say that off the bat, that that's why that number's lower. Some of the things that we've seen a change in is our unaccompanied youth doubled this year. So, we had about 32 last year, we have 70 this year. That's the continuing trend nationwide of more and more students from the ages of about 15 to 23 that are homeless, and unfortunately, also without any legal guardian. So, that is an increase. Also, the increase was the largest on the east side of town. East High increased their numbers, more than doubled their numbers this year overall, and then, of course, their unaccompanied went up also. But we saw a large increase in East High students altogether this year, which I think that they've also been aware of, that they're having some other increases and those kind of things. Every year, we look at attendance, part of my grant is that we have 90% or better in attendance of homeless students. As we know, attendance means education, and it means services that we can get to those children. And so, 90%, 84% of the homeless students reach that, with Warner having 100% of their homeless students reaching that. I was really excited for Warren, and so it was big. The state and national levels have both asked us to start looking at racial breakdowns, so this is the first time you've seen that on this, to make sure that we're identifying our African-American students who tend to get under-identified when you're looking at homeless populations. So, we want to make sure that we're doing that. We have actually done a much better job of it this year, and I, it's just, I guess, coincidental that we have, but we have disability, students with disabilities actually went down this year. I think that has to do with, again, the COVID, where we didn't have as many of our JELF students this year, that was a real low number this year, and those are some of, of course, our special needs students. So, that would be that. So, the last little notes, if you do look at, there's a graph that I hope was sent to you, but it shows our contacts, our contracts, even though that we decreased our overall numbers this year, our contacts actually increased by 235. So, there should be a little graph just showing how those contacts are done, and that's just services provided. So, we have increased those, and that has a lot to do with just the students being more aware of the services in the community and schools. So, that kind of is a look, when we're looking at our students, where they're living, doubled-up has always been the national trend. However, in our district, we've had an increase of hotel, motel, shelter, and uninhabitable. So, we've had an increase in that and a decrease in doubled-up students.
Is there any?
Do we have any other?
Oh, I don't have any extra ones.
Do I have one? I'm just up there.
I think it was in the packet, I'm sorry.
It should have been, should be in the, hold on, I'm looking to see if it goes up.
No worries, I can look up Debbie, don't look at us.
So, that's just kind of a little oddity that we probably need to look at as why we've gotten kind of a jump in those students. I do anticipate, as we identify more in uninhabitable, our trailer parks now, some of the places that people are living in, in our trailer parks are now considered uninhabitable, which they hadn't been previously, so that was a little bit of a change. We just haven't had the time, and of course, a shortened year, to really take a look at that. So, that will increase as well.
I'm sorry?
So, the National Education, the National Association for the Education of Homeless Children and Youth, it's a, it's my agency, basically, that I'm a member of, but then it is funded out of the University of South Carolina, it's like, South Carolina runs it, and then they kind of look and they work with the Federal Department of Education and HUD, kind of collectively, and this year, HUD has taken a more broader look at what is considered uninhabitable in the United States, where previously, you could live, quote-unquote, "third world" in the United States, and it'd be considered habitable. But now, what they did is HUD decided that that was no longer considered habitable, so if you don't have running water, if you don't have electric that is actually going to your facility, in other words, I'm not stealing it from her trailer. So, if you don't have, like, major utilities, HUD is now considering that uninhabitable. And so, when HUD changed it, of course, education changed it, too. And education's definition of homeless is always more broad anyhow, and it's been a push to make HUD's definition more in line with education's definition, because we believe in education that our definition is probably the more true definition. If I have no place to live and I'm living with her, then I'm just as homeless as the person that chooses to go live in a shelter. And HUD is starting to look at that closer. It's just really, it has to do with dollars, being able to support HUD in that manner. But they did extend what's considered uninhabitable. So, that's why there's, there will be a continued bump in that, just as we start identifying some of those trailers that will fit that. And that's kind of a group effort that we've all been making. Daniel goes on a lot of home visits, and Trent goes on a lot of home visits, and as they run into these places, then they contact me and say, hey, go out there and just see because it doesn't look like it's got everything. So, that's kind of how we're doing that. Just a little hurrah for the program. So, this was my big thing. Four years ago, I had a student who was a freshman, and she has been on my list as an unaccompanied homeless youth since she was, started at East High. So, I have kept her all four years, and this year, she graduated, and she graduated with a pretty good ACT score and a pretty good GPA, and she was given the Presidential Scholarship at Campbellsville University. So, it was really big. She got accepted into their marketing and business program, and the scholarship includes room, board, tuition, and also a stipend at the bookstore to cover all her books, and a sweatshirt that she got.
Sweatshirt.
Yeah, so that's kind of her, yeah, so, kind of exciting.
The homeless notes were just added to the supporting documents. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Bill.
If there's nothing else, good.
Anything else we can do for you?
Yeah, I do appreciate, I will say this, just because I have that second, I do want to say thank you so much to all of our district leadership and our board and our very, very generous community who constantly is very supportive of this program. It's a huge blessing, it makes my job much easier, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shani. Thanks, Shani.
Thank you, Val.
We're fortunate to have you.
Thank you.
We are. Don't thank your board anywhere.
I feel that way almost every time.
I'm waiting until the last second, is it time?
We're good.
We're go. I'm hitting start on my timer so that I will be punctual. All right, so, thank you all for having us here. I will get to the crux of this whole thing, is thank you, Jessamine County, for what you do to let us serve the kids we serve in our school, in your school. There's no place like this. There's no district and no school board that funds alternative education to the level that this district does, and then the flip side is there's no district that holds it accountable to the results that should happen in the alternative schools. So, thank you all for that. So thank you all for that. Without, I really, I know it, but we're not here. We're not moving into a new building. We're not an alternative program in distinction. Thank you all. The leadership and the school board is amazing, and has been, since with that lady right there. I really do appreciate that lady. You know, there's not words. What's going well at our school, teaching and learning? You all, my screensaver goes off, and I need to keep, I didn't even hit start. There we go. I don't get extra time. So I'll make this, I'll make this really concise. Teaching and learning, we killed it last year with math results. And our kids outpaced some of the other secondary schools in the district in terms of math growth goal attainment. We didn't get the second round of math tests this year. So we all always understate and undersell the first math test, which I think is something we should change. But the hope is, is that the students just take it in their natural state and don't get too excited about it, because we really want the payoff on that second test. I think we need to do a little better job of promoting on the front end. But that is still going well, and we're refining the RTI process constantly, so that not only the kids that have been identified for intervention, reading, and math, get what they need, which they're getting, but also the standards-based instruction that kids need help with in the core content classes in the high school. And what I wrote down was 95% of the middle school students are receiving Tier III reading and math intervention. The reason that's 95% is we've got at least 5% that have succeeded out of that, which is a great problem to have. Their reading levels have grown so much, they don't need it anymore. Same thing's going on with the high school, but it's not the same numbers, but it's not the same number of kids don't need it. But the kids that are identified as needing it get it all the time. And then we do two times a week where they get standard space remediation if they need it, which is kind of that assessment, teach, reteach thing. But creating the space in the school day where it actually happens. It's one thing to say you use differentiation. It's another thing altogether to make it happen. The counseling department is incredible, and they have systematized what they do at Providence, and they're on the same page. At any given point, any of those counselors can tell us anything that they do. They use common assessments. And then the piece that we've transitioned into is that they've now tiered the need for every Providence student, so that the kids that most need time with the counselor get it first. And they're less reactive, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but they're really proactive in terms of how they spend their time and their resources. That, which is fantastic. And then the next piece of that is how do they share that with the rest of the staff and the community-based services, so that that good information doesn't just sit there and do nothing. And so we've created a structure for the counselors to go into the PLCs and specifically talk about the kids, and then create behavior support groups or whatever support is needed at the time. We've added, and this has been a good thing, I know Val was thrilled, but we added PBIS to Discovery. This is the, last year was our first implementation year. And until I understood more about PBIS, I didn't know how much we needed it, and we needed it badly. So like, right now, they're patiently shaking their heads at us, like, yep, we've been waiting for you, Eric. I'm glad you finally got there. But it really has made a difference in how our teachers are positive, and what they focus their attention on, and what they reward. And it changes the culture of the classroom. I didn't mention, and I need to mention, our pilot implementation of classroom learning systems has been successful in the one classroom that was fully implemented. Maybe the best thing that I've ever seen in terms of initiatives. It has done well. It is incredible what happens in the student, the transfer from students to teacher. The teachers no longer own the education, the students do, and that's really powerful. One minute, 40 seconds, we're flying. Our NTI results were better than we anticipated, especially the number of kids we were able to contact and stay in contact with, 80-something percent of our kids on the social-emotional side, which is part of NTI that you overlook, not, you can overlook if you're not careful. We've had a successful transition to the new building, with many thanks to the Jessman County Schools Maintenance Department. We're continuing to expand after-school activities. The celebrations that I would move into with one minute and 10 seconds left is, we have a fantastic new building. Thank you very much. And I'll never stop saying that as long as I'm in this job. Thank you so much. It is truly an amazing space built to help specifically at-risk kids, and it's going to do that job very well. We did, we were, we returned to the Alternative Program of Distinction ranks, which was really nice, hence the banner that you see. We had a really, I put on their best, best that I could find program review from Kexak, where it's like an audit. Bless you. We, and this is Ms. Reynolds, we've increased TPS, and I finally got the numbers, parent involvement in our meetings and coming to the school over 200% in a shortened school year, which was phenomenal. And it was hard. Ms. Adams worked on that her entire time, and it's just hard to do, and it takes a lot of work. TPS students, families, and our staff expressed a great appreciation for the graduation ceremony that you provided. It was awesome. And my part of that is I got to experience this county work as a team together, and it was amazing. I mean, I love each person individually, and I am done. I'm stopping right now. Sorry about the noise. I don't know how to make it stop. I'm so sorry. I've never had to make it stop. Yes, ma'am. And she's a pretty amazing evaluator, by the way. And you meet tough, too.
And of course, we were like, go ahead. And Matt and I were standing there, and I said, look at her. She's loving it. And we just watched her. I mean, she was just like, ah!
And she knew them all. Her being, it didn't matter. Oh, no. No, no. I agree completely.
But I mean, just to see her, I mean, she knew every, I mean, you could just see her heart just exploding.
She's still calling me, hey, Eric, by the way, I want to let you know, the kid we had 26 years ago, his uncle's cousin had a heart attack. You may want to reach out. How does she know? She knows.
She does. Absolutely.
It's pretty amazing.
I mean, just to see her, just so happy, and I'm happy to see her. It was just awesome to see her.
She was in her element.
It was awesome.
Those students are going to be so excited to see their new face. And the teachers are going to be so excited to get into this space. You know, he brushed over this very quickly, but it has been a lot of years of work to really start addressing that achievement gap with that population overall.
Yes.
This is the year where there should be a whole lot of pride in what's been accomplished, because their data, and we're not talking data that teachers are formulating, but we're talking about national data that we're looking at. They saw some really, really good academic gains, better than they never have. And I know he went over that quickly, but I just wanted to come back to that, because hours of work have gone into that.
We have, we kind of didn't get it on a technicality the first year because of this ILPA thing that no one communicated as a standard, which wasn't fair. The second year, they didn't do it at all. So they gave us everything that could give us Alternative Program for Leadership and all this stuff, but they couldn't give us that because our ILPA percentage was 79 instead of 80%. And we didn't even know we were supposed to do it. I mean, we knew we were supposed to do it, but we didn't know it was a criteria. Yeah. Well, remember Denise used to have the longest faculty meetings on the planet. Oh, my God, every bit of them. It's so funny, because we would go over these non-negotiables as staff. And one of the first non-negotiables was, I believe that all students can learn at high levels. And she would revisit that every year. Now, then, I was like, oh, my gosh, please stop. Because I believe it. Okay, I believe it. Now I get why she did it. Because to get the results that we got, we had to deal with some of the people that didn't believe that in our own building. And that's huge. 2,000? And he was the first social studies teacher after FPL. Well, yeah, that's it. She was fearless. She's not ever been afraid. Yes, ma'am. Without you all, just keep hearing that, and I don't, I kind of don't mean to come across, like, whatever that is, a kiss up, suck up, whatever that, I don't mean, I don't. But I want to tell you, without that, none of this happens. And I realize how fast it goes away. And so that's why I always say that, maybe I need to back off a little bit, but I just keep saying to our staff, we've got to earn this. We have more staff.
Every time we go to those graduations, when we can, get together and see, and just what they bring to that graduation, I mean, we laugh. We had the best time. And they are, they are so talented and funny and articulate, and they're a joy to be around.
They really are.
We're like, where have they been all life? I mean, we need to put them on TV, because they are just spectacular.
They really are. Now, they didn't start out that way.
Well, I had to commit my transcripts. And I was like, I was not, what the? If my daughter said my transcripts, I would have beat them from here to there.
Oh, yeah.
They were awful. I'm like, I don't remember being that bad, but here it was.
I was an amazing C student.
Yeah. I was like, oh, yeah, I can bring that up. But I don't care. I'd have this. But, yeah.
So you guys are amazing. And to know that, and I've been held accountable by multiple people in this room, and deservedly so, and the fact that that's there as well, in love, and designed to help whatever we do for kids succeed, I really appreciate that. All of you, thank you. Thank you very much. Good to see you all. Thank you.
Is it all me? I'm going? Oh, press and start. I have met most of you. Some of you I haven't met. But I'm Bobby Hoffner. It's my first year at the Jessman Early Learning Village. So I'm happy to be here. This is my first board meeting. But it is, really, it's an honor to be here. It's a privilege to be back in Jessman County. I taught here for several years before moving to Fayette County, and coming back is just a breath of fresh air. It really is. Our school, what's going well at our school is just, there are too many things to count. Even with all of the crazy end-of-the-year things that have happened, it's just, it's been amazing. Our administration team has just come together. We have Andrea Nielsen, who is kind of our rock in our study part there. But three of us are new to that administrative role at the school. And I feel like, as a team, we've just brought different things to, the team that we're all different, and we've just run with it. And it's been great. In the beginning, as we were kind of talking about getting to know each other and our mission and our vision for the year, I think we really reflected and felt like the culture and climate of the school was where we needed to start and kind of made that our big rock this year. We wanted to build those relationships and establish the trust with everybody. We have a huge staff, 163 people, mostly women. So it's a, you know, it's a good, it takes a lot of work to build that trust and have those relationships. And I feel like that the work we've put in to supporting teachers has really paid off for us this year. We've tried to, as an administrative team, be visible and be present, just in the classrooms every day. We're here for you. You have a problem with a student, like, we're here. Let us help. And I think that has really been, our teachers have seen that and appreciated that. And I think building the trust and the relationships is going to do huge things as we get into looking at next year. This year, we kind of got to see some fall-to-winter data with our map, and we saw that growth, and we were encouraged. But we didn't get to see that kindergarten year full, you know, that end-of-the-year growth with the way things ended. So that's something that we're looking forward to in the future, is the growth that our kids are making. And I think that we've built the relationships to be able to discuss that and have hard conversations and be vulnerable with each other, and what can we do differently? Or I just feel like the trust and the relationships were that biggest piece that we had to hit there. We have done a lot of things, a lot of tried to be more consistent in our communication, not only with staff, but also with parents. We have kind of gone to that class dojo, where we've gotten all parents involved, really working on letting them know about the things that are happening in our school. I feel like for the village, we're that first Jessman County stop, and you want that experience to be great for all those families that are coming in. So that's something that we are really excited about, the things that our school is doing. This year, we piloted the classroom learning systems in a few of our classrooms, I think seven out of our 26 kindergarten rooms. So next year, we're going school-wide with that and just really making learning intentional for our kids. And I think through everything that's happened and the things going on in our world right now, that culturally responsive piece is going to be big as well. And that's a school-wide focus for us, too, that we haven't begun yet, but we're excited to, well, our teacher leaders have, but really getting together as a full staff and implementing those things. In addition to the mentorship programs that the district offers, we really worked hard to establish a sense of community. When we looked at data from our teachers last year, they felt like the sense of community was not strong at our school. And as an administrative team, we went to the staff and said, okay, what can we commit to you? What do you want from us? And they came, oh, they came up with three things. I never dreamed I would. They came up with three things, and they were the communication, the relationships, and the trust. And I feel like that's where we've really honed in this year and made a lot of progress, to lead us towards that academic piece of academic excellence, I think, so. My timer.
I'm excited to get back into the village this fall. So, yeah, my youngest.
Fingers crossed. Yes.
We're excited. I've heard nothing but good things, Bobby, from the people that, you know, that I've kind of personally known to be affiliated with the village at some of your places all year. So I think, I think that school's in great hands.
It's really a great place. I've learned so much, and I'm just, we're having fun, which is a great thing, when you can go to school every day and have a lot of fun. So, yeah. Yes. And our teachers with the NTI, they jumped on it. They really did, and did a great job, so.
I will just say, personally working with Bobby, there were some expectations that I'd made of her, some things that really hopeful could be addressed this year. And I just told her during her evaluation that she far exceeded all of those expectations. And I feel like just so many things have gone very well there. That is the place that we start our district initiatives. She talked about culturally responsive teaching and learning, and classroom learning systems, and developing those expectations with those students when they're coming in at age three is just going to make it so much easier when they're sixth graders and 12th graders. So I think they take that work very serious, and want those types of results that we're asking, so I feel precious.
Thank you. I'm excited going forward. Last year, from June until the beginning of the year, we hired 26 staff. This year, we've only hired four. So that's a, that's, yeah, for now, but we're hopeful. We're very hopeful. We have 26 in kindergarten and 18 in preschool. Instructional assistants. And special ed, we have eight. We have about 1,025 kids. It's a lot of kids under the age of six.
Any other questions, Rob?
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
And I'll just make, each of the subcommittees, making sure that we're addressing the safety protocol, coming back in, making sure that we are providing quality instruction in whichever setting our students are returning to, and then making sure we're addressing that social-emotional component. And I do just want to reiterate that that social-emotional piece is connected to the challenges that students and our families are facing with COVID. to the challenges that students and our families are facing, uh, with COVID nineteen, and then also with a lot of the racial-based, uh, stresses that, uh, have unfortunately, uh, uh, come to the surface more so recently than in maybe years past. But we are taking, uh, uh, all of that work very serious and trying to do everything that we can to be as prepared as we can to support our students. And that's it for me, sir.
I appreciate it. Do any board members have communications this evening?
No.
No? Okay. No audience communications, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Um, as Matt pointed out earlier, we have got thirty-three consent agenda items, um, we've all had a chance to review the attachments in our packet this, this month, uh, do we have any questions or comments on consent, consent agenda right now?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, so that brings us to our first action item. Uh, we have discussed the proposed salary schedules, uh, Matt, do you want to just give us a brief summary of what we're looking at this evening?
So, uh, what we're talking about, in addition to the step increase or the year's experiences, doing an overall, uh, two percent raise, and then at, uh, your guys' request, and definitely recognized, uh, by me and, and, uh, others in the district, uh, we want to try to bring more of a, uh, uh, balance to some concerns that we've had, which is, uh, uh, making sure that our classified, uh, salary schedule is moving more aggressively at, uh, uh, increasing the pay, uh, which is evident, uh, in, in, uh, the salary schedule this time, and then also from, uh, the perspective of people that have been with us for several years, making some, uh, uh, adjustments to that to make sure that we are, uh, paying better for, uh, people that, that have been loyal to Jessman County Schools. So we've, uh, made those adjustments, and obviously, I know you guys were wanting to move much more aggressively, uh, three months ago, in, in April, I think we were-
I think it was February.
February, yeah, we were, uh, uh, ready to, to move at a much quicker pace with some of these, but, uh, uh, now that we have some unforeseen, uh, revenue deficits with what's going on with COVID nineteen, and maybe some additional expenditures, uh, it's my recommendation that we move it a little bit more cautiously, so, uh, my recommendation is to approve a two percent, uh, salary increase.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. Um, this has been, this has been a, a hard issue, I think, for all of us with COVID concerns, and concerns about people in our community who are really struggling, um, lost work, uh, many of them have lost their jobs, some have just been furloughed, but, um, when I think about, uh, last week's meeting when Jason and Superintendent Moore presented the contingency fund, I feel like for a, for a period of time now, our leadership has been working hard at things, at saving money, at finding ways to make money, uh, and we now have one of the healthiest, if not the healthiest contingency fund we've ever had. And, and then I got to thinking about it, I talked to Richard Harden a little bit, you know, we have approximately sixteen hundred employees, and about half of them are hourly people, um, and it's hard to know how many of our certified people were the only wage earner, and are the only wage earner right now in their home. Um, and while I understand the community is hurting, I want to say, these sixteen hundred people who work for us are part of our community, and we have the opportunity to ease, we, we can't help the whole community, we, we, they're not employed by us, but those who are, we have an opportunity to help some, and I feel like we have the resources in our contingency fund to do so. Um, and in turn, by, by helping the sixteen hundred people who work for us, and I realize they don't all work, live in Jessman County, they all live in surrounding areas, and those people in turn then help the economy, um, so, you know, I'll, I'll be voting yes for a, for a pay raise, and I, and I just felt like I wanted to explain why, because initially, I, I thought it was kind of a, perhaps not the best time to think about pay raises when so many people were without work and teachers did continue to get paid. Um, but when you think about the entire family, um, you know, if you, if your only pay coming in right now with what you make, what your spouse makes as a classified employee in Jessman County, you're hurting.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, that, I think that's the case for a lot of teachers, too, so I just wanted to say that.
I appreciate it, Denise, and, and I think that's very well said. Um, one of the first conversations I remember having with, with Matt when I joined the board was trying to understand where our district sat relative to the other one hundred and nineteen counties in our state, and making sure that we were paying our teachers a level that was conventional with where we sit in terms of pupil rank, economic prosperity, things like that, and I think we've, we've had some corrections to make, and, you know, over the past couple of years, we've been able to, through Jason's good stewardship of our dollars and, and Matt's leadership and his team's leadership, as you've said, we've built up a pretty good reserve. Um, I really would have liked to have been more aggressive here, and, and I was a lot like you, Denise, in the fact that it felt uneasy doing this now, but I think their explanation of where we are with our reserves is, gives me the confidence to say, let's go ahead and pull the trigger on this, and if we get the opportunity down the road, um, to do more, I think we should study it, but, um, I think it's really good to be able to take care of our, of our teachers and staff right now, so.
And do you want to speak to, uh, thoughts with, uh, tax raises right now, uh, how far is that?
Tax raise, you mean, in terms of-
Yeah, just, you know, typically in August, we look at tax raises, and I guess I just wanted, we, we've had conver, we've had conversations, I guess, and just feel like, uh, it's important that we all understand that we feel like we can do this without adjusting taxes.
Yeah, I think so.
And I know a lot of your guys' conversation is similar to mine, that we feel like there, this is not the time to-
I agree.
-burden our community with additional taxes, so I know that you guys wanted to make sure as we were moving forward with a plan like this, that it wasn't going to require anything like that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, so.
I think in February, when we discussed it, that we, we were all supportive, you know, the two percent raise for the teachers, and I think we all are aware that, you know, Jessman County School District is the number one's, you know, employer of Jessman County. So to that, I say, I think-
This helps the community.
It helps the community, but I still think that we owe it to our underpaid instructional assistants and those that are, you know, if we're going to pay our bus drivers sixteen dollars, and, you know, I, I still think that we-
And we still can, I think we, we still have the ability to kind of address things later on, especially once we get into the fall and have a better-
And I do want to say, I think-
Outlook of our-
For the, I guess, maybe twelve years that I've been here, we've always had a healthy contingency fund, even when we've had to draw down because we're building a school, we've always had, you know, with Christmas, they've always-
But as we were told last week, it's never been that healthy.
That's right.
We're in our business.
But what I'm saying is, we've always, right, you want Tim, so, right?
Yeah.
He's going to beat Tim, so that-
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, are we ready to vote? Are we ready, do we have a motion? I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed salary schedule for 2021 as presented by Mr. Moore and his team.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right. Mr. Moore, item number two.
Yes, uh, the second item is, uh, for equipment for our print shop, and this is the district level print shop that will be located at JCTC next year, and we went through the bidding process and had, uh, several submit bids, and the one that, uh, uh, won that bid is Toshiba Business Solutions, so it's my recommendation that we take the, uh, lowest bid, uh, that meets our specifications of equipment and references.
Any questions, comments?
We need a bigger sign for our next graduation.
Yes, I would concur, that thing looked like a postage stamp hanging up in the air.
The bigger sign for what?
A bigger sign from the-
For graduation.
Hanging between the ladders.
We're going to be, so-
I had to put my monocle on to see that.
You're assuming, you're assuming some things about graduation fix.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Big pressure's on, so. All right, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve item G two.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Did you second?
Amy did, yes. All right, uh, it is seven thirty-nine, and I'm going to make a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation under KRS 61 810 1F and KRS 156 557 4D. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And Amy and-
Thank you all.